The town council meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting on October fifteenth in council chambers to order at exactly eight oh one. Mister, Councilman Cannon, can you lead us in the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's each of us seek knowledge and peace from the power that guides our thoughts and our prayers. Reflecting on tonight's vigil for domestic violence, and also in light of all the violence that plagues our human relations, please grant each of us the strength to think before we act, the ability to learn so we don't repeat those mistakes, and to forgive so we can move on with healing and improved appreciation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Pia, seconded by Mister Tiki. Is there any changes?
I think that's it.
If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. And now we have the pleasure of ceremonial presentation of two young individuals that are going to be leaders in our community. Can I have Savoy Volsey and Valerie Duke come forward with their families if they want, we're going to do a presentation. Someone just corrected me. I apologize to the name. Okay. You'd take Teacher Poisson, straighten me out.
Coach.
Coach. Okay. The next thing is the mayor's report. I'm going to turn it over to our mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Get comfortable. There's a lot of things going on that I'm going to report on. September fifteenth, Latin Music Festival was held at Paradise Green, and it was sponsored by Paradise Pizza. Was a great event. Our thanks to Gladys and Olga for cheering it, and for celebrating, Stratford for helping fund it. Bonfire on the Beach was held on the twenty first of September, run by Pat Maddow, and all the money collected goes to Saint Vincent Swim Across the Sound. Kitchen Brains celebrated their fiftieth anniversary on September twenty fourth. Kitchen Brains is located on Honey Spot Road and is a global technology leader that manufactures innovative controllers, timers, and sensors for the restaurant food preparation industry. It's a family business that was founded in nineteen sixty-nine by Ben Coether and is now run by his children, Kristen and Roz. The Big B, not to be mistaken with the Big E, was held at the Baldwin Center on September twenty-sixth, where the sights, sounds, and the smells of the Big E were brought into the Baldwin Center for the day. Our special thanks to Sandy Arbor and her staff for a successful and fun event. The Stars Annual Event was held at Paradise Green on October sixth. There were a gazillion dogs, well, not really a gazillion, but there were many dogs, and their owners got to come too, and it was really a lot of fun. William Samuel Johnson Day was celebrated on October seventh. In February, this council voted to reestablish the annual recognition of William Samuel Johnson, commemorating his role as the founding father of the United States and as one of Connecticut's two signers of the United States Constitution. We honored and recognized Johnson for his contributions and creation of our nation. Special thanks to State Senator Kevin Kelly, Stratford Historical Society, David Wright, also the town of Stratford's David Wright, too, the Stratford High School Band and Acapella Choir, Ed Rawls, who is the pastor at the Congregational Church, and Reverend Pat Coller for delivering the invocation and benediction. Rich Kendall and Ethan Stewart, son of Marcia, were also here from the Sons of the American Revolution. Our Domestic Violence Vigil was held tonight on the Town Hall Green with the Center of Family Justice, and it hones of the victims and survivors of intimate partner violence. The Fortieth Cavalcade of Bands will be held at Benell High School on October nineteenth, beginning at quarter of five at Benell Field. This annual fundraiser helps defray the costs for students who travel to competitions. There are many new businesses that we welcomed into Stratford recently. Miller and Morella LLC. On October third, we celebrated their new law practice on Main Street across from the old post office. Branded Barber Shop, which is located in Paradise Green, is Stratford's newest barber shop. Branded is owned by Partners Rodney Clark, who's a Stratford resident, and Will Coxon parent, and Will Hernandez. Wildside Nutrition also at Paradise Green was welcomed, and they have delicious, healthy smoothies and teas. Owner and Stratford resident, Minerva Benson, is a wellness coach, and she is very happy to be opening her second business, and this one is in Stratford. Companions and Homemakers, on September twenty-fifth, we welcome them, and they are located at Station House Square. We look forward to working with them in their new facilities and to ensure that their mission is successful. Little Pub and Surfside Motel opened at the former Martin's location on September eighteenth. Co-owners Doug and Denise Gray spent a good part of the summer renovating and making improvements to the Waterside location on Ten Washington Parkway. The new venue offers patio, the rustic decor, quality pub food, as well as a kid-friendly dining experience. They are also working on the adjacent hotel, which has twenty-nine rooms. I couldn't believe it until they told me and showed me, and is reimagining it into a beach getaway called the Surfside Motel. On September thirteenth, we joined Maya Cabrera and her team for opening her second Stratford residence, Sibas Dos. The new restaurant is located in Stratford Center at twenty-four sixteen Main Street. And National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, is holding its first Stratford meeting on October twenty-third at the Burzide Municipal Center in room one-ten. The meetings will be held on the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting at seven-thirty. I'd like to give you some project updates. The one-ten realignment and what's Broad Street projects are continuing. Many of us have been stuck in traffic, but the outcome, the result, will be much better if we can just be a little patient. So they're working at one-ten on widening the west side of the road up by Orin Oak Lane intersection. At the same time, the overhead utility relocation will be taking place on the east side of the road. The work will be shifting from east side widening and Sikorsky driveway alignment during the coming month. Traffic will be constrained, though the corridor will be open during most of the time. The traveling public is advised to avoid the area if you can during peak times because a lot of traffic comes out of Sikorsky during their shift changes. But that's nothing new. West Broad Street, the work is progressing on the curbing sidewalks and drainage on Linden and Church Street off I ninety-five ramp. The work will be starting with the utility relocation at the intersection of West Broad, California, and Knowlton. The work will require some lane closures that we have experienced, and the work done at the intersection around the curb drainage will be undertaken on West Broad. Work at the intersection will be continuous through the end of this construction. So I also wanted to point out that there were some concerns voiced by some parents and the Board of Education about the ease of walking and pedestrian access for our students getting to Stratford High. So the contractor was quite accommodating when we met with him, and he set up a walkway on Linden Street on the Cumberland Farm side and the Dentist side, which is a safe way for the students and pedestrians to access under the viaduct and Up King Street. We have some upcoming events. The Pumpkin Festival will be held on October nineteenth from noon to four at Booth Memorial Park. This unique event can be enjoyed by the whole family, and there will be pumpkin carving contests and performances by the Connecticut Dance Conservatory. And at two o'clock, there will be a costume parade for children. Children. The Health Department is having their flu clinics. The Health Department is having flu clinics on November sixth, thirteenth, and twentieth from one thirty PM at the Stratford Health Department Nursing Office on Burzide Street. Medicare, Part B, Anthem, Connecticut Air, Cigna, and Aetna are accepted. We are also working with the school district to review a complaint regarding some flooring issues at Benell High School. The architectural and cost analysis is being done for repair, and when it is completed, it will be forwarded to Building Needs for your review.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? If not, we'll go to four-point-three-point-one. If I can get a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion. The ordinance committee met on September twenty-third, and we have referred an ordinance amending Article Two, Section seven dash four through seven dash eight, which is on the Commission on Aging, to town council with a favorable recommendation. This would be to repeal those sections in its entirety and re-adopt them as amended as Article Sixteen, Sections five dash eight-six through five dash eight-eight. And it'd also be resolved that this is the second reading of the ordinance be dispensed with, as copies have been forwarded to everyone.
Is there a motion? Is there a second for Mister Pia? Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call it to vote. I'm sorry, it's going to be a roll call vote. I'll start with Mister Pia.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Is there a motion on five-point-eight, five dash eight-six?
Five dash eight-six is the old ordinance number.
Okay.
That was replaced in this new codification.
Okay. All right, so we're to Building Needs, four-point-three-point-two. I apologize, it only took me two years, I still haven't got it straight, so it's good.
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, four-point-three-point-two, A and B, be ratified.
There's a motion from Mister Poisson. Is there a second by Mister Tiki? Is there any discussion on these? If there's no discussion, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Four-point-three-point-three? Yes.
On October eighth, we've been moving to the replacement of the backstop at Fenchley's Field. And October tenth... On October tenth, a special meeting of the Parks Rec Committee was held, and as Chairman, I accepted a motion by Mister Marcone to approve and send to the town council with a favorable recommendation awarding the town bid number twenty-twenty dash thirteen, new backstop to Atlas Industrial Services LLC. After due diligence and checking references, we have accepted them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mister Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, a call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. The town attorneys report.
I have no report. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing is five-point-one.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item five-point-one, which is a resolution adopting the Connecticut MetroCog or Metropolitan Council of Government Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, updated two thousand and nineteen.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman. Before you guys do that, it looks like it's on the table, so you have to move to take it off the table first.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to take it off the table, Mister Pia.
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table.
Seconded by Mister Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mister Chair, I'll move forward with making a motion to approve item five-point-one, as previously stated, which is the MetroCog Hazard Mitigation Update Plan.
Seconded by Mister Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Six-point-one.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to move ordinance amending Sections six, five dash six-one through five dash six-seven to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Seconded by Mister Harden. Motion by Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mister Greg.
Is that with two Gs or three?
Two Gs. Our favorite councilman, by the way. Everybody's favorite councilman.
Through the chair, if I had particular questions about why certain changes were made, who would I address that to?
Well, I think, I think also, Councilwoman Dantcho is just referring it to ordinance. We're going to hash it out in ordinance. That's all, that's all we're talking about right now.
Should we not give us an extra thirty days to consider why certain changes are there so when it gets to ordinance, we're more prepared to make that decision?
I think that we can probably take care of it during the ordinance.
If we need an extension of ordinance, we can do that. That's the place to do it, since we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, I just would prefer to vote on something that I understand.
Well, right now, we're just voting to send it to ordinance.
There'll be plenty of time for clarification there.
We're just going to wait another thirty days.
Well, it's only two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other further questions, I will call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Mister Pia?
Yes, Mister Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve item six-point-two-point-one, which is a resolution regarding sidewalk improvements, project through the CDBG program, years forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five.
Is there a second, Mister Tiki?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And I would like, before we get started, I'd like Mister Bendacchi to come up and to the podium and explain some things.
Good evening. Good evening.
Can you give us a little bit more about what this whole thing is? There was some confusion.
Sure. So, so when we go to make decisions for sealed bids for community development block grant, the regulations require us to use a lump sum dollar amount. So when a prospective bidder comes in, in this case, we're using unit pricing. So when the bid went out, there were nine units. So for instance, the cost of concrete, the cost to lome and seed, the cost to cut and remove the concrete, then what's provided is a unit of measure. And the engineering department, when they, when they put the bid form together, put in an estimated quantity for each unit, because they don't know the total, total quantity that would be required, because we don't know what the bidder's pricing would be by unit. So what happens in this case is engineering put in their quantities for the nine items. Each bidder came in, they put in their respective dollar amount per quantity, and then we total those nine items up per bidder, and it gives us the base bid. That bid is only, that dollar amount, so in this case, Reliable was the lowest responsible bidder. They bid at a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. That's simply used for comparison purposes. We do know that in the bid, and we also list the total CDBG dollar amount that's available for the project, which in this case is three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. So the contract is awarded at three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, because that's the total amount of money that's available, and then they do the work by their unit price that they put in the bid, if that makes sense.
Does anybody have any questions, Mister Pia?
So just to, just to clarify, Mister Bendacchi, the Reliable Excavating Company, that had the lowest unit bid that you received?
Correct. So, so the units might vary depending on, you know, which item it is, but when you add up the units by lump sum, it was the lowest lump sum bid.
Thank you.
Correct.
Mister Cannon.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris. So the inventory of sidewalks can be accomplished at the low bid of a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. And that's as much work as we expect to do and as much money as we expect to spend? That we'll have a unused, unspent balance against that three seventy-three?
Nope. So the contract will be for three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. In this case, Reliable will carry out the contract. So for instance, in their, in their bid form, so, you know, for concrete walk at four inches thick, at an estimated quantity of thirteen thousand five hundred units, or thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, I'm sorry, they came in at six dollars and seventy-five cents a unit. So they'll, they'll do the six seventy-five cents a unit throughout the entirety of the project.
But they may do many more units than...
Correct. So the thirteen thousand five hundred was just an estimate. It might, it could be a hundred thousand square feet, but they'll carry that six dollars and fifty cents out throughout the entirety of the project if the funds are exhausted. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any more questions for Chris while we have here? If not, we'll, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pass six-point-two-point-two, resolution regarding local prevention program grant.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mister Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pass item six-point-two-point-three, resolution regarding public health emergency preparedness grant.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second, Mister Harden? Is there any discussion? Andrea, you want to come forward and say some things?
I made a clerical error in that I did not add an additional twelve thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars to that grant. I forgot to add the amount of money that we get to do the Medical Reserve Corps volunteer work, so the total amount for the grant is a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and nineteen. So I just wanted to make that correction.
I'm looking to the attorneys. Do we have to do a modification, or can we?
You should, the motion should be as amended, so someone should make that amendment. Vote on the amendment, and then on the amended motion.
Can I, can I get a motion to amend the number to a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and nineteen by Mister Cannon, seconded by Mister Perillo? Any discussion on this? If not, yeah, go ahead.
Andrea, can you define for us the Ledge Light Health District? What Stratford's resources would be used versus the district's resources?
So the district serves as, as the fiduciary for Region One. The money comes from the Centers for Disease Control. It flows through the State Health Department, and then the State Health Department has five basic units, or excuse me, fiduciaries for Region One, Ledge Light Health District, who is, it's what's considered Region Four. They're serving as our fiduciary. Stratford is serving as the lead for Region One. Ledge Light serves as the lead for Region Four, because that's their, their region. They're in, you know, the New London area.
For our Region One, can you give us an idea of what that encompasses?
The Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the state, the state is divided into five regions. Region One ranges from Stratford all the way to Greenwich. There are fourteen towns and about, I mean, it's almost akin to Fairfield County, but not quite.
Are there any other questions for Andrea? If not, we'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. That was in the amendment.
That was the motion to amend, so now you have to vote on the main motion.
Okay, so now we're going to take a vote on any motion. Any other questions on that? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Mister Pia?
Yes, Mister Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven-point-one, which is the Sterling House Power Purchase and Licensing Agreement. Thank you.
There's a second for Mister Harden. Is there any discussion?
I just want to add in, this is, this is an awesome project, and I'm glad to see the administration and the town continuing to do these, these green initiatives and green technology with improving the efficiencies all over town, so I want to thank the administration on that.
Any other comments?
Discussion?
Yeah, this is discussion time.
Is there someone that could answer questions regarding the contract?
Maybe.
Hopefully.
I'll do my best.
A volunteer.
Volunteer.
Hi, Bruce, thank you. First, was this a, a no-bid contract, or did a number of entities offer different types of solar solutions?
Quite frankly, I, I don't know. So remember, this is a Sterling Houses project. All the town is being asked to do is to consent as the ultimate owner of the project. So I wish I could tell you whether or not it was a bid project or whether or not something else. I just don't know.
If it's a town, if the town's taking ownership over, over the solar installation, it has an abbreviation, I forget.
If I may, Mister Cannon, the, all that's going to happen is, this is only saying, if Sterling House should cease to exist, which I don't know how would happen, but if it should cease to exist, the buildings that make up Sterling House would vest into the town. All this agreement, remember, we're not signing the agreement, we're just signing the consent as the ultimate owner of the property. It should Sterling House cease to exist, that the, that we would abide by the terms of the contract. But I know of no terms under which Sterling House as a, as a separate entity could ever cease to exist.
So it's, it's not our role tonight to determine whether the contract is, if there was any comparative criteria used to select this vendor?
We have no control over Sterling House. We don't control them. They have their own board. All we do is ultimately own the underlying property.
Oh, here we go. Here's an expert.
Expert, no. But Sterling House, Chris, Carol, and Amanda sent me this agreement probably about thirty-plus days ago. There was some question of whether we wanted to put it on the agenda or not, whether there was oversight. I thought they were sending it to me to do the due diligence to look into whether the power purchase agreement was the proper amount. I did some comparative analysis. It is absolutely spot on. I think the Sterling House is getting a great deal on it. Then we went back and forth on whether this had to come in front of the council or not for whatever reason. The solar company is asking, because of that loophole, Bruce, I mean, it's not a loophole, because of what Bruce just described, the solar company was requiring that, because they are doing a power purchase agreement for...
Thank you, Chris. So Bruce, very low likelihood that Sterling House will cease to exist, but if that did occur, what liabilities would come to the town of Stratford?
So one of the reasons, one of the issues is, you cannot lean a town building. In this case, normally, if you were to put solar power in your house, they'd put a UCC recorded against your house to protect their asset. They can't do that with a town building. We won't let them. So in this case, what's happening is, how does the solar power company ensure that if Sterling House should cease to exist, that their asset, which are the solar panels, doesn't just become the town property? Well, they will become the town property. The town will then own them if Sterling House ceases to exist, but they want us to agree to abide by whatever Sterling House had originally agreed to with regard to the sale. Remember, this is not a lean on the property, but it's, but it's a power sale agreement. So all we're agreeing to do is to sell the power at a certain price that we've already looked at. Right, excuse me.
So it's a power purchasing agreement?
Yeah.
Which means the, the power that's... It is absolutely spot on. I think the Sterling House is getting a great deal on it. Then we went back and forth on whether this had to come in front of the council or not for whatever reason. The solar company is asking, because of that loophole, Bruce, I mean, it's not a loophole, because of what Bruce just described, the solar company was requiring that because they are doing a power purchase agreement.
Thank you, Chris. So, Bruce, very low likelihood that Sterling House will cease to exist, but if that did occur, what liabilities would come to the town of Stratford?
So, one of the reasons, one of the issues is, you cannot lean a town building. In this case, normally, if you were to put solar power on your house, they'd put a UCC recorded against your house to protect their asset. They can't do that with a town building. We won't let them. So, in this case, what's happening is, how does the solar power company ensure that if Sterling House should cease to exist, that their asset, which are the solar panels, doesn't just become the town property? Well, they will become the town property. The town will then own them if Sterling House ceases to exist, but they want us to agree to abide by whatever Sterling House had originally agreed to with regard to the sale. Remember, this is not a lean on the property, but it's a power sale agreement. So, all we're agreeing to do is to sell the power at a certain price that we've already looked at. Wait, excuse me. Maybe I got it wrong.
So, it's a power purchasing agreement?
Yeah.
Which means the power that's generated from those solar panels will be purchased by the owner of the panels. So, a couple things, and used actually purchased by the recipient, and then, but the owner of the panels holds the asset. But this asset, this photovoltaic system, is on Aaron's Gym.
Yes.
It is not on Sterling House. It is on Sterling House property, which is in trust to the town of Stratford, but it's on Aaron's Gym. Aaron's Gym, in part of the contract agreement, may be turned over to Sterling House when the Babinow Foundation decides that they no longer want to run the gym. That's how Sterling House got involved with this contract, and because they are part of the town, they came to the town to make sure that you all were in agreement with this power purchasing agreement, which normally lasts 20 years.
It's 20 years.
It's a 20-year agreement.
They're saving a lot of money on this agreement. They're buying their power for less money because of solar. And, I mean, just for a little color and maybe a little flair tonight, should the Sterling House cease to exist, the last thing we're going to worry about is the solar agreement. We're going to worry about the rec programs and the food pantry and all the other stuff the Sterling House does, and I believe at that time, we will be very relieved that the power purchase agreement is set at what it is.
One more question, please. From the Building Needs Committee, I noticed that the roofs at Eli and Johnson are done, which queues us up to maybe do solar at the elementary schools. Will this agreement help us choose a vendor for the school?
Because Aaron's Gym is a privately-held company, foundation, they aren't subject to the same bidding processes that we are as a municipality or government agency. I don't know how they did it, to Bruce and Chris's point. I don't know if they went out for a competitive bid. It's internal, we don't know. But anything that happens on a town building is a competitive, is an uncompetitive bid. And if I could address Whitney, I mean, Johnson, the strength of the building does not support solar panels. We looked at that when we applied for the grant from the state last year when we did the new roof. And the cost to shore up the structure would have been much more than we would have received from the panels or the electricity. And as much as it distresses me being green and sustainable, that was, it was an economic analysis that we had to do.
Okay, so now we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion?
I will abstain.
Okay, so Bill's going to abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
So, it's, what, eight? Eight with one abstention. Yep. Okay, now, next thing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.2, which is a TA CBS extension for Stratford Public Works Employees Association, Local 134.
For the record, that should be CBA.
CBA. I'd like to amend that. Thank you, Attorney Hassan.
So, you have a motion to amend, Mr. Harden, your second motion. We're going to amend it to CBA. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. Now, Mr. Ticky, Mr. Pia?
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.2, as previously stated and
Is there any, is there a second from Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero. 7.3.1?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christopher Blintner of Salve Street, a member of the Inland Westland Commission.
To the vacancy with a term to expire January 13th, 2023.
Is there a second, Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion about the appointment? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes nine zero, votes yes, nine zero. And can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Pia, seconded by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes nine zero.